Okay, thanks. Thanks very much for your attention. Next presenter is Dr. Paul Leisner from Portland, Oregon. Paul was going to be here in person, but something cropped up with the electoral cycle back in Portland and he's had to cancel a trip, but he did manage to pre-record his presentation for us before the event. So, he has actually recorded this for this conference and we'll go through it. And Portland, Oregon is renowned as being one of the leading community engagement methodologies in the United States and most of the big cities across America have traveled to Portland to hear what they're doing. A bit like we've heard from David Hammond with the last presentation, who were leading the way in terms of better ways of engaging the community and taking them on the journey with us and increasing local satisfaction with their council. What's been happening in Portland, Oregon now for a long time has been that exact thing in America. So, to hear about their approach to how to win over the community and get them to be supportive of council decision-making, can you please watch this video?
I'm Paul Leisner. I'm the Neighborhood Program Coordinator for the City of Portland, Oregon in the United States. I'm here to share with you the story of how Portland, over 40 years, has evolved its nationally and internationally recognized neighborhood and community involvement system. I'm going to provide a brief description of Portland, define some basic terms, identify why effective community involvement is valuable, briefly describe the major steps on Portland's 40-year journey toward more effective community involvement, share our city's principles of good public involvement, identify program elements and general strategies that have worked for us, and share some basic lessons we've learned over the last 40 years. I'll also answer some questions that have been posed by local council representatives from some of your communities. So, just a little bit about my background. I have a master's degree in public administration. I worked as a nonpartisan policy analyst with the Washington State Legislature and a program developer and program evaluator with different state government agencies. I also worked for many years as the research director of Portland's premier civic organization, the City Club of Portland, where I coordinated and supported teams of community members who researched and made recommendations on a wide range of different public policy issues. I also have a long history as a neighborhood activist here in Portland. For the last 20 years, I've been on the board of my own neighborhood association and was the president for five years. I've also, for the last 10 years, been on the board of my neighborhood district association, the largest one in Portland, and served for two years as the volunteer board chair. I recently finished a doctoral program at Portland State University in urban studies and my dissertation looked at, examined the 40-year evolution of Portland's neighborhood and community involvement system and looked at specific questions around what does that history tell us? Are the crucial elements to make a citywide engagement system work? What are some of the dynamics, political and otherwise, that help or hinder moving these kind of systems forward? And what does it take to really embed these new systems and new practices in a community and in its local governance? So, Portland, Oregon, Oregon is the state on the west coast of the United States, south of Washington State, north of California. Portland is the largest city in Oregon. We have 600,000 residents in the city of Portland. 2.3 million people live in our larger metro area. The demographics of Portland were about 75% white, 10% Latino, 8% Asian and Pacific Islander, 6% African-American, and 1% Native American. We have a very complex Native American community, even though it's small. We were one of the resettlement cities when the government moved Native American peoples off their lands, so we have over 300 different tribes represented here in Portland. We're a major seaport, even though we're 100 miles from the coast of the Columbia River. We're one of the largest wheat exporting ports in the United States. We have high tech with Intel, timber, agriculture, athletic apparel with Nike, tourism, creative industries, food, and lots of craft beer. We're known for land use planning, light rail, and our streetcar system, community involvement, sustainability, and the satirical TV show Portlandia, which is actually filmed in our city hall building quite often. We have an unusual form of government, the commission form of government, where the mayor assigns different city agencies to individual city council members, and then they actually have administrative control over those agencies. Our city is primarily responsible for land use planning and development, streets, water, sewer, police, fire, and parks. Human services tend to be provided by our county government, Multnomah County. Our annual budget is about $3.6 billion US and we have about 6,000 city employees. Our primary city government revenue sources are property taxes, 40%, utility license fees, 16%, and business taxes, business licenses, another 16%. So, what are we actually talking about here? There are many terms for the kind of work that we're doing. Participatory democracy, strong democracy, local democracy, shared governance, community governments, they're all different terms, but they're basically talking about the same thing. And there are two crucial elements to this. One is breadth, and it's breadth of involvement, where it's, you have a wide range of different people and perspectives involved in decision-making in your community, so breadth. And then depth, where community members actually have a real opportunity to affect outcomes. It's not just for show. They're able to raise issues, help set priorities, suggest alternatives that are actually seriously considered, and that their input leads to impact and implementation. This is a major shift for many governments, local governments, and I think the tradition around the world is more of a traditional expert-driven kind of focus, top-down focus to government, where people get trained as traffic engineers, health experts, they've got the expertise, elected officials get elected to make the decisions. The community doesn't, isn't really seen as having a role in that. That's more of an adult-child relationship, as Matt Leininger and others have characterized it. That's the traditional form of public administration. What we're talking about with community governance, participatory democracy, is much more of an adult-adult relationship, where community and government have a partnership. They each bring important information to the table and they work together to solve the community's problems. It's an adult-adult relationship. It's a major, major shift for many, many people in government to go from the traditional to this new partnership form. Why is community involvement important? Here in Portland, we, our official policy has established that good community involvement ensures better local government decisions that more effectively respond to the needs and priorities of the community. It engages community members and community resources as part of the solution. Many times, complex problems can't be solved by local city governments alone. You need to be able to tap into the resources that are out there in the community to solve problems. It also engages a greater diversity of the community, not just certain groups that have figured out how to access government decision-making, but the full spectrum of people in your community, especially those who haven't been engaged in the past. It also increases public understanding and support of public policies and programs. In the United States, we're very suspicious of government, and so the more community is involved, the less they resist and fight different government initiatives. So, a collaborative approach is much more effective, we've found. It also increases the legitimacy and accountability of local government actions. When you're involving the community in an open and honest way, it's much more difficult for bad things to be done behind the scenes. And so, there's a lot more accountability for governing well and that, and fewer problems. So, Portland has been working on this for 40 years. We've had lots of ups and downs. We've made mistakes and we've recovered from them. In the 50s and 60s, we were just like every other place. There was no community involvement. Decisions were made by a small group of sort of insiders, land developers, bankers, the local newspaper, other influential people. So, the community was not involved. In the 70s, around the world, there was a big sort of movement, there were many movements to try to get more authority and control out into the community. There was the women's movement, civil rights, disability movement, environmental movement, and the neighborhood democracy movement. And so, Portland was part of that. Like many other cities, they, we developed a neighborhood system here that pushed a lot of decision-making and planning out into the community and government started working with people in the community. This was spurred partly by lots of fights between community activists and government over big urban renewal projects that people didn't want, that were destroying inner older neighborhoods, and a new city council that came in with a very activist new mayor who had a vision for revitalizing downtown Portland, not abandoning the downtown, and he saw the local neighborhood activists as real allies in that. So, a whole new vision for Portland was born back in the 1970s. The city council adopted a city ordinance that established a formal process for recognizing neighborhood associations and also created the Office of Neighborhood Associations at the time to provide all sorts of kinds of support to neighborhoods, to help them organize, leadership training, communications assistance, and a number of mechanisms to involve community members in budgeting, neighborhood planning, and infrastructure decision-making. During the 1980s, the system expanded until the whole city is now covered with neighborhood associations. Many, many different city bureaus had advisory committees that brought community members in to advise them on their budgets. There are plenty of other kind of advisory committees that were used. In the early 1990s, we got a new mayor and there was, who was very focused on running government like a business and treating community members not as partners in governance, but as customers of city governance. And so, just like when you go to the store, the store's usually not engaging you in a big discussion about what kind of bread it should carry, it just sees what kind of bread you buy and don't buy and makes decisions based on that. And so, there started to be a shift away from engaging the community. The neighborhood planning program went away, budget advisory committees went away, the neighborhood needs process for infrastructure projects went away, funding stagnated. Community members at first were, didn't understand what was happening, but as they did, they got more and more angry and there were more and more conflicts between the community and city government on major project after major project. In the early 2000s, the city council and the mayor sort of desperately tried to figure out, how can we fix this? And started to look at ways to improve the system. At the same time, there, a new mayor was elected with tremendous grassroots support, who was very, very committed to a shared governance model and very committed also to social justice and engage in communities of color and immigrants and refugees who had not had a voice either in the neighborhood system or in city government in the past. So, suddenly, there was a big shift that happened. The new mayor had a big review done of the entire neighborhood and community engagement system that identified the need not just to focus on geographic neighborhoods, but other communities that hadn't had a voice to provide support to them, communities of color, immigrants and refugees, elders, youth, renters, people with disabilities. And so, the program started to expand. There was also a recognition at that time, we needed to focus on the government side of the equation, and the Public Involvement Advisory Council was created by city government that includes half city staff and half community members, that's actually going through and developing guidelines and policies and support for city government to start to shift that culture to that more adult-adult model that we talked about, where city government is willing and able to engage effectively as a partner with the community. So, the system started to expand, more funding came in, more people started to get involved. There's a real renaissance and a blossoming that happened for us in the last few years, and also a major focus here in Portland on equity, whereas the white community has done pretty well in Portland over many years. Studies have shown that communities of color and immigrants and refugees have sort of trended down on all of the kind of measures, graduation rates, housing, income. And so, Portland is focusing very intently right now, trying to understand how city government decision-making and actions can stop abetting that, but actually try to turn that trend around and working with those communities. It's very exciting work right now. So, major elements of the system today, we have 95 independent neighborhood associations recognized by the city. They're grouped into seven districts, and those districts each have an office that are run by nonprofit organizations made up, governed by representatives from those neighborhoods. City government, my office, funds about $2 million a year out to those seven districts. They have hired about 35 to 40 staff people who are out there providing direct support and services to neighborhood associations, whether it's technical support, visioning, communications, dispute resolution, all sorts of different services. We also have a neighborhood small grants program that has been extremely effective at getting people involved, and we also support a wide range of activities, just fun activities that help people get out of their homes and engage with each other. Picnics, block parties, community dialogues about important issues like race and other challenges, gentrification. We also have our non-geographic community partners, the Native American Youth and Family Center, Latino Network, the Urban League of Portland, the Immigrant and Refugee Community Organization, and the Center for Intercultural Organizing that are specifically working on providing leadership training to their communities and helping people from their communities have a voice in decision-making. We have a relationship with Elders in Action for older adults, the Disability Program and youth, and we're starting to look at other communities as well. The Houseless Homeless Community, renters, who else has not been heard? Our office was created back in the 1970s. As I said, we have staff who serve all those different kinds of needs. We also have crime prevention staff. We support the Neighborhood Mediation Office. We have the Information Referral Service for, for the city and county, and we also have some livability services, noise control, liquor licensing, and our new marijuana program, which is just starting up because that has now become legal in Oregon. So, it's very important to establish very early on a shared agreement between your local government and your community on what good community involvement looks like. And I think many times, people in local government and local councils think they're doing good public involvement, but if the community doesn't think so, it's not really happening. So, our community, our Public Involvement Advisory Council actually worked together, city staff and community members, to develop to share a set of principles which have been adopted by our city council, and I encourage you to consider doing something similar. I'm going to just walk through the basics of this. The first one is partnership, that community members have a right to be involved in decisions that affect them, that they can influence decision-making and get feedback on how their input was used, whether, doesn't mean you have to agree with what the community wants all the time, but at least show how you use the input, and that the community has the opportunity to recommend projects and issues for local government to consider, not just react to things that local government or local councils decide to do. Early involvement, don't involve people just at the end of something when all the big decisions have been made. Public involvement should be an early and integral part of issue and opportunity identification. Concept development, defining the problem should be done with the community. The design of processes, the implementation of city policies, programs, and projects, involve people along the way is very important. Building relationships and community capacity. Public involvement processes should all be trying to invest in and develop long-term collaborative working relationships and learning opportunities with community partners and stakeholders. The more you learn to work together, the more you get to know each other, the better you are able to work with the community, because you have that trust and you have those relationships. That is something that develops over time. Inclusiveness and equity. Public dialogue and decision-making processes should identify, reach out to encourage participation from the full diversity of your community, not just the people who figured out how to access it. Processes should respect a range of values and interests and the knowledge of those people out there in the community, who know their community probably better than anyone else, but different parts of your community are going to be different and have different needs and cultures. You'd need to make sure that you're involving historically excluded individuals and groups in authentic processes that are really meaningful to them and that the impacts, including the costs and benefits of your decision-making, are actually identified and distributed fairly. Good quality processes and implementation is essential. In Portland, we've had years of doing tons of process, but a lot of it hasn't been very good process. It's not been well-designed, was burned up a lot of resources, was frustrating both to city staff and to the community. Put a real emphasis on learning how to do this well, making sure that you have staff and people who can guide you in being effective. Use these resources and these efforts effectively. If you go out and do bad process, you almost do more damage to your efforts to establish shared governance than you would if you didn't involve people. So, do it well, and that these processes, each process needs to fit the scope, character, and impact of each different policy or project you're doing. Don't have a cookie cutter, one-size-fits-all approach. Processes also need to adapt to changing needs as a process moves forward. Lots of times, you find out things that maybe your initial community involvement plan is no longer relevant because things have shifted. You need to be able to recognize that and be flexible. Transparency is very important. The public decision-making should be accessible, open, honest, and understandable. Members of the public should receive the information they need to participate effectively, and they should get it with enough lead time to actually assimilate it and use it effectively. And to the extent possible, just share the information. You know, I think this is a struggle sometimes for people in local government. They feel they own the information and they don't want to share it. Governance belongs to everybody, and the more open you are, the more credible your efforts will be. And also, accountability is the last principle, where city leaders and staff are accountable for ensuring meaningful public involvement in the work of city government. It's not enough just to have a set of principles that looks good on paper, but if you're not making sure that they're actually being followed and people are accountable for them, it's not going to work. So, principles, establish some principles, very important. We also have really focused on building government, local government capacity with our Public Involvement Advisory Council, and there's some very basic strategies to that that I hope you'll consider. One is putting community governance sort of policies and guidance into your policy structures. In the case of Portland, we've adopted the Public Involvement Principles, which now apply to all of city government. We are also developing very detailed community involvement goals and policies for our comprehensive plan, which all city staff will be legally required to follow on any land use planning and development projects, including transportation planning, sewer planning, water planning. There are other opportunities to get, to help your city agencies then develop, they're each one of them developing their own policies for, that fit their agency, that look at what kind of work do they do, who do they interact with, what kind of projects do they need, so that there's guidance for them that fits their local, their culture and their work. So, there are a bunch of opportunities to put things into policy where people then, that sends a message, this is important, and then they need to follow it. But for city staff people to be told they need to do a better job involving the community, but to receive no help is actually fairly cruel to do that. I think if you want people to behave differently, you need to support them in doing it. And so, what we're doing is we're helping city staff, we're working with them to develop all sorts of toolkits and guidance. We have a wonderful public involvement toolkit that helps city staff assess when do they need to do public involvement, and if they do, how much, or at what level, or how should they do it. You need something that helps city staff start to understand how to think about this. We're also developing lots of different guides on how effective meeting facilitation, process design, process evaluation, many, many different, how to reach out to different kinds of communities. Also, participatory budgeting processes, neighborhood and community visioning and planning processes, capital project planning processes, developing templates around how to do these different things are really beneficial to helping staff start to move forward on this. So, once you've got your sort of best practices identified, making sure that there's regular training available and professional development for your local council staff, so that they start to learn how to do it and feel that they have the support. Make sure there's evaluation happening, both of individual processes, but then somebody's looking at the bigger picture across these evaluations to see what can we learn from this? How can we all improve sharing that information? And somehow getting some technical assistance and consulting, whether you're hiring people into your local government who have that skill set, whether you're relying, identifying and relying on consultants in your community, or even community members that are very wise and have shown an ability to help with this. Find people to help you and your staff know how to do this. Without the help, it's very difficult to do this kind of work. Some of the common stages on the journey to community governance that we've sort of seen from our own experience, the traditional government's model that we had in the 50s and 60s was little or no community involvement. I think there are lots of places in the world and in the United States that are still, there's fairly minimal community involvement. The next step usually is at least doing the minimum legally required community involvement. There may be from your national government or a state government or other requirements. I know for many Commonwealth countries, you have the consultation requirements. Again, some of those can be fairly minimal, a few public hearings, a few notices, or they can be done in a more expansive fashion. But, so, that's the second stage. The third stage is more traditional public information and outreach tools. This is, you know, sending out newsletters, you know, local governments talking about themselves and telling the community what they're doing, keeping people informed, and doing sort of basic open houses and, and those kinds of activities. There's some, a lot of sort of traditional work. It tends to be very focused on what city government needs and city government's perspective. Doesn't always work very well for the community and often is more of a one-size-fits-all approach. But again, it's better than just doing the minimum or doing nothing at all. Portland spent a lot of time, many years, in that phase, doing a lot of city government-centered involvement that was not really as effective as it should have been. Another important step on the process then is to move your vision out from just city government to saying, we want to build capacity in the community. To have a partnership, you really need to have both sides have the capacity, the leaders, the ability, the organizations, to do this work. And that's something Portland has now done for 40 years, supporting the neighborhood system and now these other non-geographic community organizations that are supporting leadership training, organizational development, and we're helping those groups start to know each other and talk to each other through convening them through major events and regular meetings. A small grants program is another way to get push resources out into your community to build capacity. So, a comprehensive strategy, that's sort of what we're trying to do now, puts all of those pieces together. It supports capacity in the community, it works on changing the culture and improving the culture and capacity of government, and to really help them work together. And that at that point, this work really becomes just a natural part of the way you do governance, local governance. It's no longer something that you sort of tack on or, you know, try to fit into government and becomes part of your, just the thinking and your approach to governance. So, those are some of the steps that we've become aware of. Some of the lessons that we've learned, know your community. Most communities have a lot of diversity in them of some sort, and you need to identify what are those different communities within your community? How do those community members group themselves? What are the natural structures? Is it churches, associations, football clubs, other kinds of groupings? How are people already grouping themselves in your community? What do they care about? Different communities care about different things. And what are the most effective ways to reach them? For our Native, for our African-American community, working through the churches is very important. For our Slavic community, they're very focused on their churches, but you don't use, that's not an appropriate vehicle for them. There are other vehicles that are important to them. What kind of media do they listen to? Who do they trust? So, really getting to know your communities. Moving beyond sort of more traditional community involvement, the one-size-fits-all, it's better than not doing it, but try to move beyond that to make it more meaningful and engage more people. Strive to make your involvement more community-focused, not just on what city government needs, but really thinking, why would this be relevant to the community? What do they care about? What's the language that would be meaningful to them? What's the bigger context they're viewing this project in? They tend to look at the community in a much more holistic way. Good process design is very important. As I said, get help, get some people in your community who actually know how to do this really well, who can assist other people. We do that a lot in our office with other city agency staff and leaders. We're sort of an internal source, and we also work with the community to help them engage government. Try to find some people who can do that. Lots of our city agencies actually have their own community involvement staff people who understand the agency and are available to city staff. Using a two-pronged approach, build capacity in the community, build capacity in government, do them both at the same time, that's what it takes to make this work. But be realistic about where your community is right now on its path. It took us 40 years to get here. Things we're doing now, we were not ready to do 10 years ago, 15 years ago. So, part of it is being realistic about where you are in your community, what's a logical next step to start to expand this, build that capacity, build your community's awareness of how to make this work. And that this all takes time, stay the course. Again, it, you don't need to take 40 years to do it. We made lots of mistakes and had a lot of detours, but this takes time and people slowly start to develop trust, relationships, and changing their perspectives of how to do the work. People may not love you immediately. Lots of times, if a community hasn't done a lot of community involvement, city, local council leaders might do outreach, thinking that everyone's going to be really grateful, but sometimes people have a lot of pent-up frustrations that they then, you know, share with you. Be ready for that. Let that wash past you and keep going. And stay the course is very important, because this is a very big transition, again, from the adult-child the adult-child model to the adult-adult model for many people in local government. Some of the questions that some of your local council representatives posed, I'm going to focus on now. One has, how has the neighborhood program in Portland changed over the years? Many of our initial structures, the neighborhood system, the Office of Neighborhood Involvement now, formerly Office of Neighborhood Associations, is still in existence. We lost ground in the 1990s, but many of those programs have come back. We again have budget advisory committees. Every city agency has community members that help them develop their budget. We don't have neighborhood planning so much anymore, but we have a district liaison planner program where planners are assigned to different parts of the city for long periods of time so they develop relationships and knowledge of those areas. We've expanded the system to include the non-geographic communities, supporting them, and we've got that strong focus on working on the internal local government culture and capacity as well. So we're increasingly starting, using innovative strategies and tools. There's a lot more openness to that now than there was in the past. Do you see technology impacting on the way the program operates? Yes, definitely. There are amazing technological tools available to help with a lot of this work. We group them into sort of four major categories. Tools that help inform, whether it's e-newsletters or different types of social media that get the word out into the community about what's happening in government and opportunities. Then there are feedback tools that get information back from the community, whether it's online surveys or other kinds of engagement tools. There are providing services as another category. So people have, there's something called PDx, that's Portland Reporter, where you can report potholes and graffiti and other things like that and access services. The last category is the engagement category, which are the much more complex kinds of multi-layered processes that include online dialogues, broad different kinds of information that are exchanges with the community, ideas and making community, making information available to the community. So those four areas, we're doing a lot of work in that, using lots of different tools, informing, getting feedback, providing services, and engaging. How do the neighborhood associations determine their priorities? Is there a common methodology? Well, we've got 95 neighborhood associations. They're all different, at different levels of capacity, different kinds of needs and issues. Some engage in annual planning processes to identify their priorities for the next year. Others just work on projects and react to issues as they come up. Some engage in formal long-range visioning processes or asset-based community development processes, which I strongly recommend, where community members identify what are the strengths in their community and individuals and organizations and in institutions. And then based on that, they start to look at, you know, what can they do with that capacity? What do they want to do? Also the initiation of planning projects and policy development. There are lots of different planning projects go on in Portland as well as many other policy and program development efforts. Sometimes the city takes the lead in those and comes, sees the need and goes out and engages the community. Other times the community recognizes the need and comes to the city and says, we need planning for this area, we need this kind of new program development, or we need these policies changed. So there are many different pieces to this. Of all the plans put forward by the neighborhood associations, what percent are supported by the city of Portland? Well, neighborhood and community members are involved in shaping most local government policies, programs, and projects in Portland right now. So there's tremendous involvement. Community members don't win on everything by any means. There are still battles and fights, but there's so much more collaboration than there was in the past. So it's not so much, when you do work together, you tend to be able to then evolve something. It's not like neighborhoods are coming up with something in isolation and then try, coming to the city and saying, implement this. They've learned to work with the city to try to develop these things. So the city involves the community in all local planning efforts, many of which are done at the request of the community. We're no longer trying to develop a neighborhood plan, land use plan for every neighborhood. The city's looking at sort of broader areas that have similar issues. Again, the district liaison planner program has been very, very beneficial at supporting that. And again, sometimes community members win and sometimes they lose, and sometimes the existing rules don't support what the community wants, but community members have become very savvy about then reaching out to local government and other allies in the community and actually changing the rules, changing policies. So I think that's been something that's very positive in Portland. It's not just about fighting, but it's assessing what would it take to actually make this community better and working on it together. How do we communicate with the neighborhood associations? So city government has formal notification, legal requirements, that they will send land use notices and things to neighborhood associations and other groups via mail, email announcements in the newspaper. Lots of email engagement, lots of social media, e-newsletters, Constant Contact, Twitter, Facebook, Nextdoor is another organization that the city now has a formal relationship with. Lots of work with community newspapers and ethnic-based newspapers like The Asian Reporter, The Cell Would Be, The Hollywood Star. These are local newspapers that lots of people read. Various different other kinds of media. We have local community radio, cable access, television, working with major ad organizations here in Portland that then do pro bono work to develop outreach efforts. We've had great success with combining sort of more traditional mail and online tools. One, our sewer agency did a great job recently of sending postcards to a wide range of residents in an area, but that drove them then to a website where then they could fill out a much more detailed online survey. Their response rate to that went up tremendously from what they'd done before. So be creative, use all the tools that are available. Different people respond to different tools, so you can't just do one. Are there some issues that are common to many Portland associations? Well, the biggest one is people feeling that they're heard on issues that affect them. That goes across all of our geographic, our neighborhood and business associations and our non-geographic communities. People want to be heard, they want to know that you understand them and are working with them to solve problems. Neighborhood livability issues are always big, transportation safety, public safety and crime, environmental issues, land use. For many of our communities of color and immigrants and refugees in Portland, they have a big focus on jobs, housing, safety, transportation, and education. They're all starting to, start to work together on that to have a shared common voice, which is very helpful. How much funding does the city of Portland give to neighborhood associations under what conditions? We have $2 million US that goes out every year to our seven district neighborhood offices to provide assistance to their neighborhood associations. They provide communications money, up to $1,000 per neighborhood association, lots of other kind of assistance. Our neighborhood grants program's usually around $100,000 a year, and that's available not just to neighborhood associations, but many kinds of groups. In exchange, they, neighborhood associations need to follow certain basic standards of nondiscrimination. They have to have bylaws, they have to have open meetings and have their records be open. We also provide a wide range of leadership training and technical support, both through the districts and through our office. Leadership training is incredibly important. If you're able to make sure there's some kind of a good leadership training program in your community, that would be a big help. And not just the kind of training that helps people like city government or learn to be a good parks volunteer. Those are good things as well, but to really help people understand how to analyze issues, how to be good advocates with the city for things that they want for their community. We also give out about $2 million to the other non-geographic community partners right now, and we're trying to look at expanding that as well. Lots of city agencies also have public involvement staff, and some of them have special kind of like environmental grant programs for the community and staff that are out there trying to engage with the community effectively. How is the city of Portland's planning well-being change as a result of input by the associations? Well, Portland is seen and has been for many, many years as one of the most livable cities in the United States. A lot of that is because community members come up with so many ideas and have the opportunity to work in partnership with government, local government, to actually make these things happen. So I think, you know, over 40 years, it's now no longer a question of whether to involve the community, but it's more how do we do it well? And to better understand different communities and how to engage them effectively. I know in many communities, there's still, that's an important hurdle to get over, is maybe that constant questioning of why should we involve the community? What role do they have? Weren't we elected or we're the ones trained to make the decisions? And so part of it is making sure that you can move beyond that as we have. The community has broad influence on setting priorities for city government and in shaping policies, programs, and projects. All elected officials in Portland know that there's a certain expectation. That was part of the backlash that happened a few years ago. So there's a political imperative to involve the community that everybody recognizes. And so the community actually, when it does organize well, can often have quite a strong impact. And the city over years has just found it's much more effective to partner with the community. We can accomplish so much more when we work together than when we fight each other or try to do things in isolation. Having city government try to identify the problem, identify the solution, and then go out and tell the community about it. I think it's the design, declare, defend, deploy kind of model where you come up with your plan, you take it out into the community, and you just take the beating and hope you can get your project over to the finish line. That's no longer acceptable in Portland. And so that's been a big shift for us, that big shift from, again, the sort of top-down kind of public administration to the partnership model. Again, I just want to emphasize for you that this community involvement is extremely important and it's sort of a global movement. Communities all across the globe now are starting to see the value of this, starting to explore this. Many of the issues are very same no matter which country you're in. We can all learn a lot from each other. I think for us, again, just to recap, you know, the value of this, doing this community involvement well is better government decision-making, engaging the community members and community resources and solving the problems of your community, really, truly, genuinely, authentically engaging the full diversity of your community, increasing public understanding and support. It makes governing so much easier when the public, the community is with you than when they're fighting you or they're absent. And it increases the legitimacy and accountability of government, which is important to all of us to make sure that governance can happen effectively in our communities. So I want to thank you for inviting me to share Portland's story with you. We in Portland still have a lot of work to do. We're still learning a lot about what works and doesn't work, but at least we've really moved beyond the old style where we didn't involve the community or we didn't involve the community well. We've started to recognize the importance of how to do it, and we are definitely working on that. Please contact me if you would like more information about community involvement in Portland. We have lots of resources. We have lots of communities contact us about strategies when they're trying to evolve these systems, and we're always happy to help other communities. Certainly, we would love to have you come visit. We have lots of people come visit Portland and see how we do things. We can tour you around and help you see on the ground how these systems are working here in Portland. So please visit us, and I wish you all much success in building stronger participatory democracy and community governance in your own communities. Thank you very much for letting me speak with you today.